Let's begin with a moment of silence, reflection, and personal prayer. Thank you very much, and we'll officially call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. I don't believe I see any new faces here. Everybody's reminded that in the back of the room, in that corner of the room, the agenda and other supporting documents will tell you what's going to be said and done tonight, and help yourself to that. And also, a special tonight. To my right and under the TV on the table is a lot of goodies, and there's something to watch through the goodies down with. And the clerk has said that I'm to remind everyone to help yourself during the meeting as you wish, and if there's not enough there, let us know, and we'll...
Call Domino's.
Or we go to the refrigerator in the break room and look for something. All right. If number three on our agenda is pledge allegiance, if you would please, let's stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag on my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on the agenda is a consideration of approving the agenda that's been presented to you. By the way, if you cannot hear, if you'll raise your hand, we'll try to adjust our microphones accordingly. So the agenda's been before you. Is there a motion? We approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second Mr. Brown's motion.
All right. In discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. Number five on the agenda, the minutes of November 12th, November 16th, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Brown, second. Brian, motion, discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The minutes are unanimously approved, and we'll turn our attention to number six on the agenda, public comments. I have no one signed up for speaking to number six on the agenda, so we'll move to number seven. Presentation of a plaque to the outgoing board of commissioners. Mr. Hewitt, town manager.
Yes, sir. It's a tradition that we present the outgoing board with a plaque, and so it's picture-taking time. I'm glad everybody showed up with their best on tonight, but if you could join me up front, we'll make the presentation to the outgoing board.
That means everybody, right?
Everybody.
Yeah, everybody.
I get to stand aside for the girl.
The plaque reads, "Town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners, December 2019, November 2021. Mayor Jay Allen Holden, Commissioner Gerald Brown, Woody Tyler, February 2020, Brian Murdock, Mike Sullivan, Pat Kupkowski, Rick Smith, April 2020."
Presentation of plaque to Commissioner Sullivan for the outgoing board of commissioners. You want us up front?
I can get permission.
Okay, just take the steps.
Yeah, yeah. On behalf of the fellow board members in the town, I find you've done a good job. We appreciate your efforts in every way, and you've added a lot so many times to what we're doing here, and it's noticed and appreciated by all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank the Lord. Well, number nine on the agenda, board commissioners' comments. Mr. Brown, you got any comments you want to make?
Not at this moment. Not at this time.
Rick, you got anything?
Yes, sir. I've got to work with Mike on a couple of boards. He is a true professional. I really have always enjoyed working with him, and he was always available for support, whether it was we were on the same side or not. We could at least agree sometimes to not agree. But I will continue to reach out to him and talk to him. He's a neighbor, and they walk by quite often, so when they come by to wave, I'll wave back, and hopefully he can stop and visit. And thank you for your service, Mike.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock?
Mike, I'd also like to thank you for your service to the town. This is a sometimes really tough job to do. You're one of the most tenacious people, I think, I've ever met, and we always agreed to disagree most of the time, but I do appreciate your service. It takes different kinds to run this place, and we certainly, most of the time, teamed up for the good of the town, I think. So I do appreciate your service, and it's nice to serve with you.
Ms. Pat?
Well, I feel like I'm losing my kindred spirit in a way. As I said last time, I'll still bike down and see you because I know where you live. I'm going to miss the legal mind. I'm going to miss somebody who argues back with me to sort of steer me when I'm starting to get a little bit flustered and, I would just say, lights going every way. But again, I know I can still rely on you for opinion.
Mr. Brown, are you ready yet?
Yeah. Mike, I just want to say thanks, okay? You did a great job for the town, and we're going to miss you. I know a lot of times we didn't say a high on things, but that's politics, especially a small town. But I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the job you've done, because I really know that in your mind, you thought you had the best interest of the town. And that's what we all strive to do and what we should continue to do. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else you want to say, Mike?
I sure do. First of all, I kind of said this at the last meeting, but it was at the end, and I don't know if anybody heard it. It's been a pleasure and a privilege for me to serve for four years on this board, and in that four years, I learned a heck of a lot about the town, and it's a little harder to run a town and have the town run efficiently than it may seem on the surface. So it's been a pleasure to work with the people who work for the town. They work hard, and they work for our best interests, so it was a pleasure to work with them. Secondly, it, you know, I have to thank the voters for having the confidence to put me in a position where I could make decisions that affect their life and the way they live, and I hope I did it in a manner that was acceptable. Last, but not least, I want to thank the board, because we have had a lot, this board and the board prior, have had a lot of discussions, a lot of differences, but I believe in my heart that the people who sit up here, sit up here hoping to do the best they can for the town and for the people who are here. So for that reason, despite the fact that we didn't agree on a lot of issues, I always respected them. Now, to get to the tenacity point, this is the last chance that I'm going to have to speak as a board member, and there are just a couple of issues I want to address before I go sit in the audience and somebody else sits up here. On tonight's agenda, we have an issue about parking. The decision on how we go forward is going to affect the town, and it's going to affect the town well into the future. What I would say is, we had a vote last month on the pier. Prior to that vote, we had tremendous amount of meetings and discussion, and the people on the board asked for the input from the community. In fact, I can remember distinctly one of my colleagues saying, "I wish we could have 200 people sit in this room, but we can't." But what we did have is more than 200 people respond to a survey. Vast majority of those people didn't want to purchase the pier, but that was totally disregarded, and the vote was for the purchase of the pier. Well, in the last few days, we got the return of a survey that was held by the HBP elect. 768 people responded on that survey. There's only 650 people that live here, so that is a tremendous amount of people, plus people who own property, people who just belong to the... That's a tremendous response. And I'll just point out three things out of this survey that has to do with parking. One of them is that the people are in favor of paid parking. There's no question about that. Let me just find these. Implement paid parking. Eighty percent of the people want to implement paid parking. Nine percent are not in favor of that. That's fine. Ninety-three percent of the people are opposed to parking in the right of way adjacent to their property. Ninety-three percent. Only three percent are in favor of that. And 91% are in favor of allowing the property owner to use post-throw. 91% opposed to 4%. If you look at the agenda packet, the commissioners are going to vote on parking. In that, the current plan is to do away with the post-throw parking and to have parking in the adjacent property next, in the right of way next to people's property. That is clearly, 90% to 93% are not in favor of that, either one of those things. So what I would say to my board members is, you asked for input, you've received the input. As we all said, we do this job because we want to do the best we can for the town and for the people who live here. We are not, and we should not, be dictators and have three or four people decide as against 90% of the people, how this town should operate. So I would ask you to reconsider or to give deep thought before you vote on this, and consider the input from all the people who responded to this survey, because you can't use the argument that you can skew the results because of the questions. The questions are clear. Do you want to have parking in the right of way? Agree, strongly agree, disagree, strongly disagree. There's not any room there for confusion, and the same thing goes for post-throw. There's nothing that you can be confused about. The people of this town are not in favor of that. We can go forward with paid parking without doing it according to this plan, without changing the ordinance. And the last thing I'd say is, that ordinance can't go into effect tonight unless four of the people vote for it, because you can't have a new ordinance unless two-thirds of... Look at the rules of procedures. Rule number 33, you need to have two-thirds of the vote in order to pass an ordinance on the first time it comes before the board. With that, I'd just say, it's been a pleasure, it's been an honor, it's been a privilege, and I enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you want to address number 10, or do you simply want...
Yes, it's Judge Gerald Arnold to come up here. We will do it one at a time, if that works for you, so if you'd like to go first, thank you.
Will it go here?
That would be perfect.
Put your left hand on the book, raise your right hand.
You can do it in a flat, you can do it straight.
Do you, Allen Holden, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and veritable in each of those laws and to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities of this state which are not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the United States. And do you further solemnly swear that you, to the best of your knowledge and ability, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner of the Town of Holden Beach, so help you God. Congratulations.
Okay, then we have Commissioner Page, aye?
Thank you, Mike. You put your left hand on the book, raise your right hand. Do you, Page, aye? Solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that you will be faithful and veritable in each of those laws and to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or which may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support and maintain the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, all to the best of your knowledge and ability, and do you further solemnly swear that you will be faithful and discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner of the Town of Holden Beach, so help you God.
Okay, then we have Commissioner Page.
Rick Smith, do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and that you will be faithful and veritable in each of those laws and to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional authorities which are or which may be established for the government thereof, not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the United States. And do you further solemnly swear, to the best of your knowledge and ability, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner of the Town of Holden Beach, so help you God.
And the town clerk, I took this whole body.
Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and that you will be faithful and veritable in each of those laws and to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional authorities which may be established for the government thereof, and that you will further endeavor to support and maintain the Constitution and laws of that state, this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. And do you further solemnly swear, to the best of your knowledge and ability, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner of the Town of Holden Beach, so help you God.
Okay, we need everybody to sign us, so we are official.
Mr. Mayor, can I say just a word?
Yes, sir.
This is not my first time swearing in a mayor and board of the Town of Holden Beach. It's a long time ago, since the 1980s, when I was here, and in fact, your brother served as the manager, was living in my house at the time.
Did you know it? That he was getting...
Yeah, I did. I did. I've always told him about that. I want to say, I do not personally serve as a higher calling in public service, and I do appreciate the fact that you have shown pride and satisfaction. I appreciate you here this evening and being a part of public service. It's the compensation you get for public service, and I want you to know that I have a lot of down home pride tonight in being here. Talking to Rick Smith earlier, I've come back. This is now my home. This is my town. So I appreciate the fact that you serve, and as I tell Nirvana often, I am your humble servant if I can help any object. I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page, welcome.
Thank you, sir. This is what I want to be. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a doctor. Why not? I need to... I work on some research. It makes people happy.
I'm in the 80s, great.
Oh, no, I was talking about that.
We are official. Come over here, ready.
We're official.
All right. We're official, all right.
We're official.
Judge Arnold, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're ready to move to number 11, and that is the election of our mayor pro temp. Is there any motion?
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the board, I just want to say a couple things. I've really enjoyed serving as the mayor pro temp, okay? And it's been an honor, but at this time, I would like to nominate Mr. Rick Smith to be our next mayor pro temp, if that pleases the board.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion for, is there a second? Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Any more nominations or comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Congratulations. That's an increase in your salary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Gerald, for the time you served.
All right, we move to number 12. Madam Clerk?
In front of the board is the 2022 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule. All the dates except for the March date reflect the third Tuesday of the month. We are proposing that the March date be the second day, or the second Tuesday due to conflict, so if the board would approve that, we'd appreciate it.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule.
Looking for a second. Second. All right, Mr. Brown, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say no. It's approved unanimously. Number 13, again, town clerk.
The board is required to adopt the rules of procedure. The current version that the board is using was included in your packets for you, so you guys could continue to use those rules, or you could amend them, do completely new ones, whatever you would like, but we recommend approving the ones that you're currently using.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the subjective rules of procedure for the Town of Holden Beach. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Brown, seconded. Rick made the motion. Any discussion?
I have a couple of things I would actually like the board to consider altering. Part four for the agenda, I noted at one of our previous meetings that the board is not doing a consistent job on providing supplemental information for the agenda items, which has frequently led to some public comments about it's hard to comment on something when we don't have any information on what is behind the agenda item. We can't, I mean, we can't force someone to write something up and put it into the packet or to make sure that attachments are added that are available, but I would like to propose that we make a statement that failure to include adequate background information such that all board members and the public can reasonably understand the reasoning behind the proposal shall be grounds for proposing removal of the item from the agenda, see Rule 13b2, so that perhaps if people remember that, it can be a reason for a commissioner to request that the agenda item be removed until there's sufficient information. Maybe that will prompt people to remember we are supposed to be putting some information in, so our public knows what we're discussing. Then the only other thing that I would like to propose is that we move that the packet is given to the commissioners at least four days, four business days, before the meeting. By my count, that would be Thursday at the latest, and that it is also published on the same day. We have a lot of information coming, we have a lot of topics. The public does want to see things so that they have time to question. I use as an example the fact that this past agenda, this past package didn't hit the press or didn't hit the public until the afternoon of Friday, which wasn't much time. So again, I would like to propose that we move things forward for the board to receive things four days, four working days ahead of time, which would be Thursday at the latest, and that publication also occurs at least four working days.
Ms. Pat, if I may, I ask you a question.
Yeah.
Procedurally, the first point that you made, my understanding is that a commissioner can make a motion at any time to remove something.
We can. We can. of it is a good thing here. Again, it's been very uneven the past year in particular about people providing adequate information in the packet for the public and other commissioners to understand what is going on to prompt a certain discussion and possible action. If board members just want to say they're going to get better about it, that would be fine in a way, but I would still propose to put it in as a prompt of our right to do this, and something that would almost trigger that you have nothing in the packet, I would like to propose that if you move to the next meeting, or to a meeting later when you have enough information.
Is that a motion?
I'm wearing, no, they made the motion, you opened it.
Are you asking to amend?
Yes, I am asking to amend. I am asking to amend the rules of procedure.
Now, I guess we're looking for a second.
I don't have a problem with that. I just think if any of us are going to put something on the agenda, we need to definitely back it up. I mean, if you come in with the one matter, I mean, that's, I would agree with Pat that that would be unacceptable, but I'll maybe just agree that we won't do that. If any of us need to put something on the agenda, then we should have a reason to do just a little bit of footwork underneath it.
That was my understanding going in, is that we had to have the, you know, the supporting documents or the supporting reasons.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That before we put something in, Heather has guided me well on making sure I did that.
I'm reminding everybody of the number of times we have had the public express concern that they don't know how to comment because it hasn't been enough information. So if people are just saying we will be better about this, I'm fine with that, but I would still like to amend page six, or I would like to amend 13a, four, and five, to move it to four working days ahead of time, which would be Thursday.
Can I just speak to that? Since I'm only cutting out, I mean, if that's what you guys want us to do, that's fine. However, we don't always have the stuff if we're waiting for something from some, I mean, I would feel like you would rather give me the extra, I usually get it out by Thursday anyway, but if I need till Friday, I would think that you would want me to have until Friday so I can include the information instead of sending out a supplement. I think the extra day, I've been needing it, I mean, I've had it out on Thursday pretty much every meeting anyway, and the reason I put, I do put it on the website a day later, I do that for you guys. If you don't want me to do that, just tell me right now, you don't have to amend it. I do that so you have the opportunity to get the agenda before people call you and talk to you about it. So I give it to you the night before, and the next day I put it on the website. So if you don't want to do that, that's fine with me.
Well, again, I think that given how much stuff we're putting out there, for the public to not get it until Friday is a bit of a pinch for some of them.
If the board, I mean, if that's the board's wish, you don't need to amend that. You guys can just tell me that right now. That's, it's fine with me. I do it for you. It's done anyway, but at that point, just me putting it on the website, completely up to you.
I also think, that's, we're all fine with that, I think, but I also think that sometimes putting something on the agenda is actually starting or laying some groundwork to work toward something, and you don't always have a plan. I've heard that word a million times. So I think sometimes you have to start with basically nothing to create. I mean, you go rolling out a parking thing this alley's never seen, I mean, we won't get it right the first time. I don't know how you can, I don't know how you can put those down on somebody to do every time correctly, but, I mean, we'll do better. If you think we're doing bad, we'll do better.
I'm trying to do better. Again, if it's just discussion, it's one thing, but when you're having a discussion with a possible action, you kind of need to frame it in a way so people, I mean, most of us, when we go into a discussion with possible action, we have something thought out enough that a paragraph can be provided so people know what we're thinking, and as I said, it's not just the public, sometimes it's the commissioner too who would like to know what prompted you to start the discussion, where are you hoping to go, or what are the alternatives. And again, people are happy to just say we're going to try and do better. That's fine. That's fine. But I will start, if agenda items have nothing with them, and I think they should, I will start recommending that they be removed from the agenda.
That's fair enough.
Just give everybody one.
Fair enough.
And if the board agrees that with the, that the parent can release the, can release the packet electronically the same day that it's provided to us, I mean, I'm happy with that. We see the agenda ahead of time to make sure it's right. I think that's the most important thing.
Correct. Okay, so you are removing your request of amendment?
I will remove my request after discussion with the board.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. We're at number 14. Ms. Pat?
There have been, over the past several months, there've been a number of requests for a peer property plan. Public wanted to see in writing what the commissioners were thinking to do with the peer property, and a lot of questions about, and how is it going to be paid for? Are my taxes going to go up? Are there going to be assessments? What's going to happen? What I've done is I have written up from, I would say, copious notes that I kept during discussions, discussion, board discussions, individual discussions with different commissioners, what has led us to the decision to buy the peer, what the intent has been, which is essentially, you know, buy the property, bring it back to its, to its day of being efficient here, use the building, not out of mind with how it's been done, we will have an area of the park that needs to be paved, park. I've presented what the due diligence on the building and the peer has said. I've given some estimates, particularly for the building, of some general, what it might cost to get it to a stage it could be leasable, thanks to Commissioner Murdoch, who has spent considerable time going out there and estimating, sometimes with Commissioner Brown as well, to give experienced, experienced estimates as contractors. I have simply used what the peer due diligence has provided to predict what it might cost to repair the peer. I've given some background on what I would call the state of our general fund and our B PART fund, the health, the monetary status of them, talked a little bit about what our revenue streams have been, particularly for B PART, which have been growing over the last years, to come to, to come to the general conclusion that based on the assumptions in this paper, we should be able within a reasonable period of time to cover the debt service and the annual maintenance costs for the peer property from a combination of leases and parking revenue. The question of the overall cost of repair, there are estimates provided in here. We're not going to know more until we own the peer and we have an engineering firm come in and do a full-fledged evaluation and report. However, at this point in time, based on the assumptions in the due diligence report, it appears that even if we do not have grants that are acceptable to help us pay for the peers, the B PART fund with the revenue stream that we have and the current strength of the fund balance should be able to cover those costs over the several years that we're proposing for the peer to be fixed, and that there will not need to be a tax increase or any special assessment. That's based on what the due diligence report currently says. If the engineer's report comes back and suggests that repairs, many more repairs are needed than in the due diligence report, and there's going to be a lot of added expense, this board will have to revisit what the plan is. But currently, with the assumptions in this report, we should be able to manage this without raising taxes, without a special assessment. Again, this is a summation of what has been happening over several months with board discussions. In addition, there are cost estimates that have been provided by the contractors that we're lucky to have on our board. I would like to have the board endorse this report as being accurate and a solid description of the intent of the board for its forthcoming.
Rick? First of all, I want to thank you, Pat, for the, the hard work, Brian and Gerald. You, we've been asked for this report for some time, and it was a very comprehensive report. I think it showed no bias in either direction, and that's what made it, when I read it, I kept looking for something that was going to be, you know, the don't do it part. And it's always been our intention to do this without raising taxes, and with our increase in the occupancy taxes, the rate they're going now, I think it is also a doable thing. And again, Pat, thank you. I remember you saying at one point that you weren't going to do this, but...
I show you a thousand guys.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I do really thank you for all your efforts, and you did a wonderful job of it, and putting up with my, some of my fellow commissioners to get it done, I know was a, was a pretty difficulty itself. But saying that, I'd like to make a motion to endorse your peer, your peer property plan. That's it.
Motion made by Rick, and Gerald seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, return the page.
Yes.
Do we have to?
I would like to propose that we accept, I would like to hear that the board commissioners accepts Resolution 2117, which I put together as a very tight summation of the 12-page report that basically lays out what the intent is, and again, that it is not the intent of this board to raise taxes or levy any special property assessment based on a program that is covered by this endorsed document. So I would move that the board vote to adopt Resolution 2117.
Have a motion, is there a second? I'll second that. All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Are we ready for number 15?
Yes, sir.
Assistant Town Manager Ferguson?
If the board is okay and will allow me, we have Carlos Manzano from Parker Poe and Andrew Carter standing by. I just need to call them. They could not travel in this evening, but they're available by phone for questions. So can I have a moment to do that, so you guys can answer some questions if you need to? Hey, Carlos, I'm going to add Andrew just a moment.
Great, thanks. Hey, Kristy.
Okay, I'm going to merge the calls. Okay, do I have both of you now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, good evening, guys. The attached Resolution number 2118 was prepared by our bond attorney, Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein, represented tonight by Carlos Manzano, and is a necessary component for our application to the LGC and also to negotiate an installment financing contract to pay the cost of purchasing the peer property. And the resolution attached at Exhibit A also is necessary for the public hearing, which is currently scheduled for January 18th at 5:00 p.m. That would be the date of your next board meeting. So the suggested motion is approval of Resolution 2118 and setting the public hearing for January 18th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. If you guys have specific questions about the resolution, these gentlemen are on the line to answer those for you.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Yud, have you got any input?
If you want to proceed with the purchase of the peer, you must adopt the resolution as presented tonight.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2118 and setting the public hearing for January 18th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m.
And I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, guys, and thank you to our finance team. Merry Christmas to you guys.
Anything else? Ms. Ferguson?
I don't know.
Chief Dixon, number 16 on our agenda.
Good evening. So the police report this month, I'm actually going to talk about a question I had just before the meeting that came up. Somebody asked me what the attempt to locate category was, so we'll talk about that a little bit. Attempt to locate, the way our reporting works is if somebody calls in, the police department, and wants us to try to find something, could be anything, the way this gets, try to figure out the best explain this. So an attempt to locate or an animal control could both be the same call, but we only categorize it one way. So if you see your neighbor's dog running loose, and you call us and say, hey, my neighbor's dog's running loose, and we go down there and try to find the dog, and we can't find him, then we'll most likely categorize it as an attempt to locate, because that's what we did, we went down there and attempted to locate the dog, and we were unable to do so. Whereas if we were able to find the dog and return it to its owner, then it will most likely be categorized as an animal control problem. So it kind of summarizes that, I hope, but that question did come up, so if your question was about attempt to locates, then that's just what they are. And again, they can, an attempt to locate can turn into something else very quickly. Other than that, the police report, you know, it's November, well, it's December now, this report's November. We're clicking along, we're doing a lot of things. In the budget this year, we got approved to transition to CAD, which is the computer automated dispatch. When the new budget rolled in in July, we did not try to tackle that project, we waited until the wintertime. So we're deep into that project now, and we're expecting and hoping to go live somewhere around mid-January. That means big changes for us, it does not mean any changes for the service that we provide to the community. We will continue to provide the same service. As a matter of fact, we're hoping to see improvements in that service as we'll have more direct communications with the 911 center. That's part of what the CAD system is, it's computer automated dispatch, so our communication with the 911 center will be much more automated and much more direct. So we're looking forward to that. Other than that, I'll give a... So our communication with the 911 center will be much more automated and much more direct. So we're looking forward to that. Other than that, I'll give a public service announcement. It's Christmas time, we're going to roll into New Year's here. Do not drink and drive, just travel safely. We want to see everybody on the road safely. As far as the beach, lane closures on December the 28th, I know everyone's familiar with the Beach Renourishment Project. I'm not going into all that, but on December 28th, we've been working with the project manager and next week, they're going to be bringing in truckloads of pipe and all that stuff. Again, the project itself is out of my expertise, but we are going to assist them with some lane closures and traffic control. So that area, I can tell you about, and those lane closures, traffic control will be December the 28th, 29th, 30th. I do not have exact times, but they'll be down here in front of Castaways Bar and Grill where that beach access is. So if you're traveling through there and you see blue lights and tractor trailers, just slow down and pay attention and we'll get you through there safely. I think that's all I have. Yeah, it's Christmas. Christmas is four days away and it's going to be 70 and sunny at the beach, so I mean, that's amazing. Anyway, that's all I have. Everyone, have a Merry Christmas and questions, comments, or concerns from the board, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you for your service.
Number 17, Mr. Murdock. Mr. Smith. Parking.
Rick, you want... Well, we had our last parking committee meeting just first of this month, December 3rd, and we were fortunate to have on our committee Ms. Dyer, and so she's equally as familiar with the proposed, the proposal from the parking company. Again, there are some things on it that, you know, we need to, as we've been instructed or suggested that we go ahead and implement this paid parking. It's something that, you know, it's not going to be perfect right out of the chute, but it's stuff, as Mr. Varner has explained to us, that we can, as we move forward, we can make adjustments. So basically, I think everybody's had a chance to look over this document. I don't, you know, we did the best we could at our parking committee meeting to try to make this as easy as we could to get implemented and hopefully, if things go correctly, we can get it started for the 2022.
I would like to make a proposal that we actually go through the topics addressed in the executive summary and that we basically vote to approve or amend each one thing individually because there's a lot of information in here. I have a number of questions and reservations on a number of topics and I think if we would do it sequentially and come to agreement and vote on each of step one through, at least one through six, it would probably be most efficient. It's almost like a complex motion.
Your thoughts, Mr. Murdock?
Is that a request or a formal motion?
That is a formal motion.
Need a second.
I'll second. I think something needs to be talked about.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. All right, you go ahead.
Can I say one? I'm going to let you take off. This is Brian and I want to say one thing. I'm going to use the HBP survey that Mike referred to earlier, that most people are in favor of paid parking and that we have a tremendous parking issue when it's, there's no organization at all to the way we park cars on this island, period. Our current ordinance allows right-of-way parking. I believe you said 93%. I don't have the survey in front of me, but I believe you said 93% of the people on this island do not want right-of-way parking. From day one, I've been saying that and I've also been saying that the right-of-way parking is going away every time a house goes up or a driveway's put in and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. To prevent right-of-way parking, the town created ordinance at some point to put up post and rope. And that's gotten to be a safety issue coming from our police department, people riding bikes down the street, things of that nature. So we tried to address the post and rope along with the parking issues. My goal is not to create a million parking spaces and a free-for-all on this island for everybody. It's to create a reasonable number of parking spaces and designated parking areas close to public access. It's public, not private. Private access should be used by the people that pay for them. There shouldn't be public parking at a private access because they're not entitled to use it. It's only for the residents that own that access to use. We do not have parking lots at this point, very many. We're fortunate enough right now, I think, and I thank every day for the board pushing through for another 80 spots or so at the pier. And we have 200 or so under the bridge and around that are permanent. I would love to see all the parking permanent and I would like to see all the right-of-way parking not eliminated because I think if you eliminate it, you eliminate it also to the people that live here. And the people that live here absolutely should have the right to use their right-of-way as parking. So if you want to say eliminate all right-of-way parking, then you're also going to eliminate it to the actual owners of the property. So I don't think that we have to work in conjunction with that. I will also say that we will absolutely not get this right when this rolls out. Everything can be changed, the rates can be changed. If we run into difficulty on any part of like, oh my God, this is causing trouble, we're going to revisit it. I promise you, we'll do the best we can. We hired a vendor consultant, who thinks a very, a good one, he's done a very good job putting this together. And myself, I'm not a parking vendor, have no experience in it whatsoever. My only, my only reason is to, you have to go along with the experience. You have to let the doctor that knows what he's doing take care of you when you go to the hospital. So that's just my, that's my two cents. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pat for hopefully a nice question and answer session, I think.
My first point is about right-of-way parking. I understand wanting to control right-of-way parking during the paid parking season between hours of nine and five, that is absolutely imperative. However, I wonder if people have thought about what it means we will have no right-of-way parking on this island. So it's 7 o'clock at night and you have family that's visiting at other houses and they all want to come to your house and have a party. Maybe you live on Brunswick Avenue. You don't have room for 10 cars. How are you going to have a party because you just did away with right-of-way parking all the time, every day? How are you going to have a Super Bowl party? Where are you going to put people? Again, if you live on a side street, one of the secondary streets, what are you going to do? I don't think the intent should be to do away with right-of-way parking. I think it should be to do away with non-designated right-of-way parking from the start of the parking season to the end of the parking season, from 9:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the evening, and our current rule is also, I think it's from 1:00 to 5:00, 1:00 AM to 5:00, 5:00 AM. So I would actually, I would actually propose that the right-of-way parking restriction is the duration of the paid parking season and from 9:00 to 5:00, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that is how it reads. And that way, people can have their friends come over in the evening, off-season, what, you know, do what they want to do. And if people can keep their post and rope and do it legally, then people who don't want anybody to park in their right-of-way can post and rope it. I hear these complaints about the danger of post and rope. Well, yeah, it's danger of post and rope because there's illegal stuff being used for post and rope. And there's a simple solution for that. The people who are complaining about post and rope can ask the board to ask the town to go and tell people who have not done post and rope right, if they have stakes, they have sharp stuff, to change it over to true post and rope. But I believe we should keep post and rope and I believe that we should limit, limit the no right-of-way parking except in designated areas to paid parking season and 9:00 to 5:00. And then that gives people flexibility. So I would move that, that the description of right-of-way parking that's given, that there is no right-of-way parking except in designated areas, be changed to there is no right-of-way parking except in designated areas from whenever we start the season until the end, the part paid parking season, and from 9:00 to 5:00.
Anyone else?
Again, the only, my only thing, suggestion to this is, as you just said, the people that don't do it right.
But we, that's an enforcement issue, Rick. If they don't do it right, with post and rope, it's an enforcement issue. There's a description of what is allowed. If they don't do it right, they can be told to take it up and do it right or don't do it at all.
Our discussion on post and rope, Pat, just to clear it up, was that it would not be placed in the actual right-of-way. Those residents do not own the right-of-way. They can put post and rope up at their property line, which is 5 to 7 feet away from the pay. And if that's, if that's what they want to do, that was the recommendation. Again, our parking vendor is here, it would be nice if he could chime in on some of these issues as we talk about.
Yes.
He has reasoning behind, you know, proposing it this way and we've, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort coming up with this.
What are you going to answer to the person who's trying to have a party and their friends and family have nowhere to park?
What if the person with the post and rope up in the right-of-way is the one having the party?
No, I'm not talking about just post and rope here. I'm talking about the ordinance of no parking in, in right-of-way, period. That is a blanket statement that means every hour year round. And for the sake of controlling parking during the paid parking season, busy season, it shouldn't be about abandoning right-of-way parking every hour of every day of the whole year. It should be about controlling where you can park during the paid parking designated times.
We have Jim here. Do you, can we have him up and weigh in on this if we talk about it? Because I, I'd like to hear his opinion. I don't know how you would differentiate between it's a resident whose friend is parking in that space at the party.
Nobody can park from 9:00 to 5:00 and right-of-way.
After, after 5:00, how are you going to tell who it is?
I'm simply saying that the point of controlling right-of-way parking is generally about the heavy time of parking for people coming to the beach, going from the beach. And, and to have parking only, only in designated areas from 9:00 to 5:00 takes care of the heavy time of using the island and the beach. And then leaves right-of-way where it's not post and rope available for friends, family. And yes, there will probably be some other people using it, but it will be after 5:00. It will not be for the entire period of the day. In fact, most of the beachgoers are leaving at 5:00, not coming at 5:00. So I think it's, I think it's better to err on the side of let's try it, controlling it from 9:00 to 5:00 during the season than to make a blanket statement and then have all hell break loose.
My fear is, in the summer, it stays daylight till 9:00 and I don't want a free-for-all at 5:00. But I'm going to let Jim, can you, can you speak to that a little?
Okay, I'll just, is there any objection from fellow commissioners? All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Varner. I'm the president and CEO, CEO of Vito Connect, who has been selected here as the parking vendor.
Could you put your mic to the speaker's mic?
Get closer to the microphone. I'm going to stand here because I'm going to address the board here. So Ms. Pat is affectionately known. Your point is well-taken and we have towns that have gone both ways on this subject, trying to keep it within just the hours, but then also managing it in the off-hours. And the issue that we've seen in other towns is when you start allowing parking in the right-of-way anytime, it gets abused. If it's a Super Bowl party, to use your example, and you have 20 cars, well, now they're not parking in your right-of-way, they're parking in my right-of-way, they're parking in the next neighbor's right-of-way, and they're parking up all the way down the street and blocking the street. And that's what we want to avoid with a simple proposal to say, no right-of-way parking. When you do have parking or parties, for example, there are paid parking lots during the day that are free after 5:00. And that's the intent, is to have those locally available for people to use for those after hours, for the businesses to use for after hours, for the restaurants to use for after hours, so that they are not affecting business or the personal lives of the people in the neighborhood.
I disagree that there are sufficient paid areas that would be open after hours to take care of many of the stretches of this island. This is a very strange island in terms of its makeup. And again, I am trying to avoid the off-season problem that particularly that this is going to cause when we don't have a lot of beach traffic relatively speaking, but we do have a lot of families that come and stay at their second properties, friends that want to congregate. And again, as of right now, a lot of the, a lot of the streets, people have used post and rope to say, don't park in my right-of-way. And there's still a lot of right-of-way along streets that...
Some streets.
Some streets, that, many of the streets where we have the permanent population, not just rental properties. And people are used to friends parking a few down because again, we don't own our right-of-way. It is supposed to be open. Post and rope lets people who want to control their right-of-way either because it's landscape, they want it to look nice, whatever reason, to control it. And yet, there are other stretches open so that there are opportunities for friends to come and they don't fit in my driveway, just go park on the street, you know, there's a few houses down, it's okay. I, I think that it would be better to err on the side of being liberal here rather than doing a blanket and then go stricter rather than have to go less strict. That's, that's my opinion here, but I do feel strongly about it.
And that is up to the board. We do have at least one town that has an alternative, where they come to the town hall and request an exemption for things like weddings. They're having a wedding on the beach and they have, you know, 20 cars coming, they want to park in the right-of-way. Or a specific event that allows... in the right-of-way. Or a specific event that allows permits to be issued for that kind of situation. But again, this is up to the board. From my viewpoint, it could be managed either way.
I have a question, please.
Yep.
Jim, it, my memory must be fading. The qualification in the text that talks about except in designated parking spaces in the right-of-way, there are several call-outs of except in designated parking spaces. I fail to recall, how is that delineation made? I, I know that's just a simple faux pas on my part, I fear, but I'm, it's not coming back to me on how is that designated parking spaces within the right-of-way made?
What we discussed during the parking committee was identification of specific right-of-way areas, if approved by the board, that allowed for parking in, for example, that 125-foot space off of Ocean Boulevard, that today has no parking, but is more than in what is required by a state statute to be an offset from the main road. So to the extent that there was additional areas in those, in that 125 feet, you can, or could, or may establish paid parking that is clearly marked, clearly delineated with signs and car bumpers, so that it's easily identifiable as a parking zone that can be used for paid parking. If it's not one of those, then there's no parking, per the recommendation that came out of the parking committee.
I, I think my real question is, is who makes that call? Who makes the call on where the parking is going to be accepted as a designated parking space?
The Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
All I can do is make a recommendation. I can make a suggestion as is, as to what is possible. And I think that is what we did. The parking committee rejected some of my ideas, approved other ideas. What we have not yet done, Mr. Hewitt and I have not yet sat down with the town staff and gone through street by street by street to make sure that there's sufficient right-of-way area, or that they are, you know, agreeable to the rest of the commissioners.
So I'm, I'm really slow tonight, evidently. And it, I'm not picking this up. So the, the approved by the Parking Committee sheets, pages forty-eight and forty-nine, those, those numbers of parking spaces, is that what we're talking about, having the board to consider as the designation, the accepted designated areas within the right-of-way in conjunction with disallowing right-of-way parking?
I leave that to the board-
Okay.
-to make a motion to approve that or not, or to take action for a task to identify the next steps related to each one of those areas.
I, my first, I, I have so many reservations about, about parking being allowed on side streets that only have a private access. And there are a number of streets here where that is the case. When I look at the December third presentation, and I'm kind of trying to blend both of these, and it says that there will be no parking west of Rothschild Street on Brunswick Avenue West. And again, that's one of my concerns about, that's a blanket statement. We have a lot of permanent residents on Brunswick Avenue. They have friends, family gathering, and, you know, if it's in the off-season, and they're used to having people come, and they park on Brunswick Avenue, and they're all okay with it. Again, I'm not sure everybody realizes what they're doing when they say, we want to, we want to abandon, we want to eliminate all right-of-way parking. I don't think it's triggering to them that it means everybody, every day, every hour. And so, I, I personally feel for this exercise of agreeing every place that is allowed, that this probably has to be done in a separate meeting. But at the very least, I can tell you, I, I, I don't support allowing any kind of vehicles to park on streets that have their own private access. You are encouraging people to trespass, because people aren't going to park on those streets and then walk a half-mile down the road to the, to the public access. They're just going to go to the closest access. That has bothered me since the November.
And I think the way that we, we did this, the private, the private walkway, this rich smell, the, the private entrances into the beach, if, you know, if you go through this list of, you're parking part one, private, 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 you notice that the only vehicles that are allowed to park there are the low-speed vehicles, and those are the ones that are usually owned by the people that pay for the public ac- not the private access.
So, so you are asking people who already have to pay for their own private access, that now they have to pay to use their golf cart? And I disagree with you. A lot of the streets are short, so they don't actually need the golf carts like the deeper ones. But it's, it's like, they have, they have private accesses, they are paying for them, the town is not, and they want to take a golf cart and drop their stuff off and stick it on the side of the road. And now you are, I can see making people pay to park near a public access. But this is a concern I have about if they did want to use one of their golf carts. You're making them pay to use their own paid-for piece of property. This, this one's difficult. I would rather actually set up a neighborhood sort of situation there. But, but I, I, again, I disagree with making those designated areas. Would it be a problem if it became, nobody can park there from nine till five, because we do allow right-of-way parking outside of those hours? That at least would be better. But I, I have a, I have a real problem letting anything park as a designated area, because you will get people driving down to use, further down, want to go further down the island, and they will go further down the island, and they will use an access that is meant to be private. And those things are not cheap to keep up.
I understand, but that's the reason we offered the seasonal permits for, for those golf carts, so they can park up there and, and they're gonna be parked.
You're gonna charge them to park to use their own access that they're paying for? See, this is the thing. You're making people pay for something that they already made pain to be near it. It's not that you're making them pay to park by a public access that they need to contribute to as a taxpayer.
Well, right now, anybody can park there.
Correct.
So somebody can, somebody can drive down there and park there with a car and use that private access. We're trying to limit who's using.
But you're not limiting it, you're not limiting it by making it evident that this is now a designated area.
For low-speed vehicles.
But, but again, I also have a question. How doing this actually addresses what we're trying to do, which is make the right number of parking places available for the public so that we are a public beach that can receive federal, state, county funding? This is a, this is, this is a game here, to me. This becomes a game of, well, there are low-speed vehicles, so that, that, that can only be people who are on the island. That isn't, but that, that wasn't the point of the paid parking program. It was not the point to make every penny that you can. It was to provide parking for our off-island visitors and to come up with a fair number of parking places near the public accesses, which is what we want to do.
All right.
So with these private accesses.
Hold it. I've been sitting here quietly. Tonight, earlier in the meeting, you commissioners voted and passed Suggested Rules of Procedure for the Town of Holda Beach. And those of you that have watched me over the years as mayor, I provide a lot of leniency to our rules. And I'm asking you on page nine of what you passed tonight, Rule Number Twenty-Five, Fourth Bullet. I mean, I'll do whatever you want to do, but you're in violation of your own rule you passed tonight. Do you want these things strictly enforced, or do you want, how, how do you want to proceed? And you can look at page nine, Rule Twenty-Five, Bullet Number Four. And it seems to me like this thing is going on and on and on. And I would ask you to look at that and the Rules of Procedure. Do you want to continue? Wave this, or do you want me to hammer down on you?
Hammer down. Just give them all for it.
Yeah.
You start.
None member may speak more than twice on the same motion.
Well, if we go back to my first motion, it was that we, that the right-of-way be from nine to five during a period of time that we have paid parking in place. And that would be my motion.
Well, Madam Clerk, don't we have a motion on the floor?
I believe that was the motion she would just-
Okay. So my question to you commissioners is, if you want me to require you to obey your own rules that you passed tonight, then we have to adhere to Bullet Number Four. And those of you that have not spoken your allocated time and times, which I believe in this case to be Mr. Brown and Dr. Stier, I think the others have spoken more than twice already. Do either of you have anything you want to say? My next question to you commissioners is, do you want to call the question, or do you want to do otherwise?
We need to follow the motion.
I don't believe there was a second, if there was any.
We didn't have a second?
I don't believe so.
Brian, did you second that?
I did.
Yeah, that's what I remembered. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, it's been thoroughly discussed. So, I'm not any more. I'm just trying to follow your rules. If I'm in error, I don't mind you correcting me. I'll call for a question here. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, say no.
No.
All right.
All right. Step two is the designated parking in lots on street and right-of-way. And I would, I would, I would move that we actually take this into a separate meeting, based on what the town manager said about, you know, how is this actually going to come together? I think you even suggested that it's the board that has to make the decision on each of the spaces. I think that's going to be a bit onerous for tonight. I would move that we actually establish the designated parking in lots on street and right-of-way in a separate meeting. We could have a special meeting early in January, we'll get that done.
And that's the motion?
That is a motion.
Looking for a second. Not hearing a second. Motion dies. Is there another motion from anyone?
I think, at the advice of, um, Mr. Jim, that he would meet with staff, town staff, and go street by street with the town manager and anybody else needed to be to make those decisions.
Can I speak to that? See, that, that's what concerns me, is that this is gonna, the, the park, no park delineation is going to become a staff decision. And I do not think, I think that the ordinal aspects of that consideration is a board decision, that the board makes no parking decisions, just like you said, the speed limit. I have concerns because I can, that's going to be a nightmare for us up here, when somebody doesn't like the, the recommendation. Now, we can come up with a list and bring it back to you, but I do not think that that should be delegated as a staff decision, which in effect has the cause of becoming an ordinance.
I agree, David.
I agree with that. But somebody has to do it. And-
Yeah, now, now-
Jim's done it. And I'll go back to what I said earlier.
Well, well, that was my question. I'm sorry to keep interjecting this. How does that designation take place? And it, it's just not clear to me by this chart that it actually presents to the board the locations where it's not allowed. Unless I am not reading this, that's what I was getting at. Unless I'm in, in just a dunce here, I'm not getting it from this, uh, proposal here. Am, am I missing something? Is it in here?
Per the map that we delineated, even though it's not here in the room today for previous discussion, we've moved that out. All of those locations were identified in the map, even though they were not included in the document specifically. But my recommendation, I would say, is, is simpler. One is, I think, we, I've heard enough that, you know, the town wants to move forward with paid parking, and I would say that's one thing that is pretty clear. Number two, the ordinances per your comments and per the notes in the recommendation, I think need to go to legal for final language consistent with the parking committee. And number three is just moving forward with each parking area. Have town staff and myself go through each one of those, and then bring those, both the ordinances and each parking area recommendation detailed on a map, back to council, or I'm sorry, back to the board, for final approval at your next meeting. That would be my recommendation. Is that consistent with what you're thinking?
Yes, sir.
The, the reason I state it that way is, first, if there is an intent to move forward with paid parking, Mr. Hewitt and I do need to work on a contract, work on logistics. There's a lot of implementation details. And if there's any intent to start it in the spring of this coming season, we do need to get started on that.
I, I understand that. I, it makes me feel better, because I thought that maybe it was in here, and I was just too thick to grasp it. I know, because I helped prepare that map, we have the fundamentals there. What we need to do now is we need to take care of the administrivia to bring that back to the board that articulates the description of where parking will be allowed.
Exactly, exactly.
We need to make a motion to ask the town staff to work with the vendor to, to get that information and get it back to our, to the board.
Is that what you're looking for, Ms. Hewitt?
Yes, sir.
Everybody understand? Is there a second maker in here?
Second.
Mr. Brown, second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favors, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right. Somebody give me some direction here. Are we through with this, or you want?
No, we're on update other ordinances related to parking to comply, establish rates, and enforcement policies. I guess I can just cut to the chase quickly, is that I disagree with March first to October thirty-first. I, I firmly believe that there's something about, in particular, March, if there's a nice day, and somebody wants to come to the beach on a rare, nice day, they shouldn't have to be thinking about, I have to pay to go for a walk on the beach, which is what this does. March is a, is a tricky month. And again, the, the RFP that we issued said April through September, which is in line with what many other beaches do. I'm not trying to keep our, our, across the water- I'm not trying to keep our, our across-the-water neighbors from being able to enjoy nice days at the beach during the off-season. They're not gonna be here in great numbers. I can probably concede on October. October is a warmer month. They can make do in the evening. But I think March, particularly since the first half of March isn't even daylight savings time. Nobody's gonna come to the beach early in the morning when it's really cold and they have precious little time to come after work. I would move that we not include March in the paid parking period, that April through October should be sufficient. It should accomplish what we want to accomplish, which is, in a large part, to control the parking during heavy beach use periods. So I move that we start paid parking April 1st and end it October 31st.
All right, looking for a second.
I'll second. I can live with that. Especially this year because I think March is gonna be tough to get. We can always change this thing. If we see we need to change it, we can change it. But as of right now, I would agree with Pat. I don't agree with moving October. March is a special month for a lot of people, for a lot of reasons. So that's just, I'll second.
All right, more discussion.
My only input to that is I feel that you've passed right as far as March is concerned. There is, as Brian has mentioned and Jim has mentioned several times, this will be the first, kick of the cat, I guess, I hate to use cat, but I like them. But this is our first stab at this deal, and it can be tweaked and adjusted. If we find that there is revenue available there and it will be worked, your time and our time, then we can make adjustments to follow him here. But as we stand right now, losing that month is okay, but I think we need to stick with
If I may, again, this is board's decision. I would only comment that several of the towns along the coastal communities are now moving to full year paid parking. North Tussle Beach has already gone to full year. Carolina Beach has just voted to go to full year. And it wasn't, it wasn't a statement of revenue. In each case, it was a statement of parking management and making sure that there was consistency throughout the year for parking management. And that's, I'll just give you the competitive market situation as to what is changing real time.
But this is something that we can change at a later date?
It's, the only thing that we would do, working with Mr. Hewitt, if there was any waffling there, is we would not put dates on the signs so that we can easily change it per ordinance to the town. And that's something that we can do very easily from our standpoint.
Thank you, Jim. You got a motion, you second me.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk?
On the parking rates, number four, the only issue I have, this is supposed to be about parking for the beach. So I, I have no issue with the $250 season pass for two vehicles, be it cars, trucks, low-speed vehicles. I disagree with a trailer being part of that. I believe that vehicle plus trailer should be a by-day fee, and there should not be the ability to have a $250 season-long pass. Again, our parking is supposed to be slated for beach access, that's our emphasis. I know that you have opened up some areas that give the opportunity, if people get there, to park a vehicle and a trailer, and they take two spaces of what could be standard. I would simply say that for those situations, they have a daily rate, they do not have the ability to have a season rate. I think that the, the access, the whole issue of the boat ramp and that will be addressed next year separately. And again, next year, we could always change it once we figure out what's going on with the boat ramp and the situations that we have already.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the, the vehicle and trailer parking, you know, we did at your suggestion, Pat, move it to forty because it takes up two parking places?
Yeah, but it does, it does give you the ability to, if you designate one of your licensed vehicle, one, one of your license to a trailer, now you can get a season-long pass, season-long pass for your boat, boating, for $250. And again, the emphasis to me for this has been beach access.
Well, the car, the truck has a tag that would have to be registered, and the boat has a tag that has to be registered, so that would be there too.
But I'm telling you.
So if they got a second vehicle there, they, you know.
What I'm saying is I disagree with giving them the ability to have a season pass at $250. I am disagreeing with that. I think that a season pass is for beachgoers. The season pass is for people who are using the beach. That is what this is about. That's why I'm not objecting to the $40 for the boat, the boat and the trailer, they need two spaces. I'm saying they should not have a season pass. So I move that that is, that is struck, that, that a trailer can count for one of two to get a season pass at $250.
Let's see, I've already got a motion on the floor, don't I? I don't? All right.
That is my motion.
Okay. New motion on the floor, looking for a second. Everybody understand the motion on the floor? All right, looking for a second. Hearing none, the motion dies. Floor's open again.
I think in terms of the enforcement policies on that, I would basically like to hear from the chief of police at the January meeting, that he's in full agreement with everything. I mean, I think that, that that's something that I would like to hear from our chief at the January meeting.
Typically, when we go through policies with the town manager, I also do include chief and his staff. I know he has one particular officer who's very active in parking management, and I would want to engage them and make sure that our policies and what I instructed my staff to do are consistent with what the chief and the town manager are happy with. So that is part of our process that we include.
That's good because the chief will be very busy in the off-season when there is no right-of-way parking, which he currently doesn't have to deal with now. So part of it's gonna be hearing from the chief about managing a different situation than we have today. And communication plans and press relief, those are things that are in your daily work, and I don't have any, any issues with that. I've been through the whole list.
Okay, so we're through with the list, including step seven? Where do we go from here? Somebody help me out here.
Is this the proper time, Heather, to make a motion to move forward with implementation of paid parking? With, with considerations?
Parking, community's recommendations with the changes that we just made.
With the changes we just made, correct.
Madam Clerk, do you know those changes?
Yeah.
Okay, all commissioners know the changes before you vote?
I'd like some clarification, if it may be, because I've heard the town manager, by position, called out about four times on what I need to bring back to the board. That's, it's my understanding that what we will bring back to the board for your determination at the January meeting is the specific delineation of the parking areas that it will be rolled out for, and that the chief will bring his perspective back on just how enforcement's gonna work.
That's great.
So Mr. Hewitt, you're satisfied at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, four to one, Madam Clerk. You got it? All right. Are we ready to go to number eighteen at this point?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're on number eighteen. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. The occupancy taxes, we have already achieved our forecast budget for the year. It's necessary to forecast what it's going to be by this, by the end of June in this fiscal year. The proposed budget amendment before you proposes or forecasts an $830,000 increase in collections of occupancy tax due to the steady number of rentals that are not only extending to the shoulder seasons, but just, there's just more people here for longer. It recognizes the required transfer of the one penny out of that $830,000 in increase in occupancy tax to Brunson County, in addition to identifying expenses associated to the Lockwood Folly dredging project, which is primarily due to an increase in volumes being identified from the corps' inlet crossing maintenance activities and the amount of $230,000. The increase of the re-upping of the Warden Smith contract, the federal advocacy efforts there in the amount of $70,000. Through the end of the fiscal year, in the amount of $70,000, we need to also propose is a bulkhead repair on sailfish, and then the increase in cans for the waste industry's second pickup in the amount of $20,000. So out of that $830,000, $476,000 are direct expenses, with $353,000 being in effect returned to fund balance.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion, I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one thirty-five, amending ordinance twenty-one thirteen.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Rick and Ms. Pat, or Mr. Brown. All right, Mr. Brown, second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, Madam Clerk? Ms. Ferguson? Number nineteen. Remind everybody, grab a Coke here or a drink. Enjoy it.
Each year in December, we have to address this contract. Warden Smith, in conjunction with the Ferguson Group, represent the town with federal advocacy issues. Currently, it's for beach nourishment, the Lockwood Folly inlet, inlet maintenance and dredge disposal issues with our material at disposal sites. This contract includes three additional areas to be determined based on town needs. One of those that they've been working with us on the last couple of months is stormwater issues on the boulevard. We received their contract for 2022, which is attached, and the monthly retainer will be $9,225 plus the out-of-pocket expenses. And therefore, the suggested motion is approval of Warden Smith contract for 2022 and direct the manager to execute the contract. This would take you through June 30.
Of this year?
Yes, the contract is for a year, but the budget is for through June 30.
Chair's looking for a motion.
I like a motion to approve Warden Smith contract for 2022 and direct our town manager to execute the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
We have someone taking Mr. Clemmons' place tonight?
I will, sir. Waste Industries has provided the town with a proposed amendment to the solid waste and recyclable collection, transportation, and disposable agreement. The amendment would extend the initial term by two years with the end date being December 31st, 2023. The charge for residential curbside trash, the second pickup, will be $10.50 per month per cart. We're currently being charged $7.78 per cart per month, and the charges for the Saturday pickups that occurred June through September, and the Saturdays before Memorial Day and after Easter. Waste Industries has explained the charges due to their increased cost of doing business over the past couple of years. In order to accommodate the increase, the board would need to do the budget amendment, which you guys just passed. So what we recommend is that you would approve the third amendment to the solid waste and recyclable collection, transportation, and disposal agreement, and we don't need to do the budget amendment. So just the agreement.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve third amendment to solid waste and recyclable collection, transportation, disposal agreement with the county.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Smith, second. Ms. Pat made it. Discussion, anyone?
I've only got one question now, I guess it's not with, Chris not here, it's not, but do we, there's no negotiation process with this? They just come to us and tell us that's what it is, and that's what it is?
Pretty much, yep. There, that's pretty much it. And it's not just us, it's all the towns that come through, that you come by and meet with us and tell us what it is, but if you want to continue.
Well, and again, the bottom line is, you know, we need to keep holding the beach clean and picking up the trash is part of that. I was just asking if there was any process for a pushback, but if there is none? I'm ready.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimously passed. All right, number twenty-one, Ms. Fennel.
Okay, we've also received the updated fees from Waste Industries, Green for Life, they're the same company, for the people who utilize the voluntary curbside recycling program, and that cost has gone down. It's currently 93.29, and it's gonna go to 86.37. So we recommend the board approve resolution twenty-one nineteen, resolution amending the Holden Beach fee schedule if you wish to continue the curbside recycling.
Looking for a motion? Mr. Brown made the motion?
Second. That's a second by Brian.
Mr. Murdock, second it. Discussion, anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk? Number twenty-two, Ms. Pat?
Yes, the audit committee met yesterday. We felt that it was, it was important that we go ahead and make a decision on how to move forward with selecting the audit firm for the external audit for fiscal year ending 30 June 2022, given the extreme pressure on the auditors because of added municipality needs and county needs. So in terms of our external audit, the audit committee recommends retaining the Martin Starnes firm to perform the external audit, including a single audit as required for federal awards in excess of $750,000 for the fiscal year ending 30 June 2022. The Board of Commissioners should authorize the town manager to initiate the contract process with Martin Starnes, which, once LGC instructions on the 2022 audit process and standard contract form are available. So I would move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the town manager to initiate the contract process with Martin Starnes at the appropriate time.
I'll second that, Pat. I'll second that, Pat.
All right, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Unanimous?
At the same time, I'd like to thank the audit committee members who have served this past year and to just remind the public that we are going to be selecting audit committee members in January. So if you may be interested, keep an eye out for the town clerk sending out a request for submissions if you're interested.
All right, number twenty-three, public comments. No one has signed up. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Oh, the, this part you don't have to sign up.
You don't have anybody to sign you up? Who would like to speak about anything that you want to speak about? You don't just have to complain, you can say something nice. We've got a ni-, is it a nice? Can't speak to the microphone if you have to speak into the microphone.
I'm Wendy Beaver and I live on Greensboro Street. And I have a question about the parking story. So I live on the part of Greensboro Street that, with the waterway in front of me. So does that mean, given the decision that was made, that nobody can park? My friends can't park on that, the part of the land that's right up against the waterway?
The street right away.
So nobody can park there ever? I mean, I own that, that's mine.
If you own it, I mean.
If you can.
Yeah. But not the right of way, is that correct?
So what's the right of way on the other side of the street?
Well, the street's fifty feet wide from your north property line of your house.
Okay. So... So they can't park along the street, but they could park on the land? On the property? That's what I, what I was confused about. Okay, thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Jim.
Merry Christmas.
She owns it. If the lady owns it, I'm out of order. If you guys want me to continue this, I am out of order.
Nope.
I'd be glad to talk with you or town manager. Yeah. But she can park on your property. Okay. We are... Number twenty-four, Mr. Hewitt?
I will be brief. Wanted to inform everyone that the progress with inlet dredging and our beach projects, if you haven't seen the Merton, the corps dredge, Merton is Hopper dredge. They are working in the inlet in the Ocean Bar at present. There is a corps contract dredger, Southwind Company, that has been awarded the contract to remove a hundred thousand cubic yards of beach compatible sand from the inlet crossing. That's the portion of the inlet that's adjacent to Brown's Landing. And there's also an additional contract option that will expand that excavation east into the Bend Widener that'll bring the total sand harvested from that navigation maintenance project to a hundred and sixty-five thousand cubic yards. That's close to the largest beach project from that area that we've seen. The production of that dig will begin the first of February. The placement of the beach compatible sand will be on the east end from about Amazing Grace, approximately two thousand feet west. It just depends on what the harvest yield bears for us. Last time that occurred, it stretched all the way down past where Blockade or to, almost to Blockade Runner. But that remains to be seen. That's, that's good, that's good news. Especially in light that our FEMA project has just seen the initial kickoff of it, the mobilization that's begun here at the Old Captain Jack's. We've put some heavy equipment out on the beach with the initial two submerged lines from offshore coming back up on the beach. As Jeremy alluded to earlier, the bulk of the shore pipe will arrive beginning the twenty-eighth of December. He might have more current information, but we're, we're allowing five days for that deposit of pipes on the beach. We're going, just like I said at the last meeting, we're going to apologize for the bulldozers making the beep 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 sound and also the, the interruption to the traveling in that block. But hopefully, those trucks will be arriving in such a manner where we're able to finesse the traffic through there. It won't be too much of a, of an interruption to your, your day. But you should expect intermittent traffic interruptions in that block near the Old Captain Jack's access. So the, the bottom line on that, we're expecting sand to be being pumped on the beach first weekend in January. We will be working east to west. As a reminder, this is about a four-mile-long project that will start about Blockade Runner is, is where I generally talk about it and going down permitted-wise down to seven eighty-one. Now, how far will it go? Again, it depends on the yield and the, and the type of sand. But it's one point three, one point four, one point five million cubic yards and hopefully we'll be able to get everything put up on the beach in the environmental wind. Our coastal storm risk management study, the public scoping for that project, that's our federal study, is underway and the anticipated date for the chief's report is August of twenty-four. There's a lot happens between the public scoping meeting and when the publication, the publishing of the chief's report. Those details will be filled in as we, as we go forward. Good news regarding the Ocean Boulevard bike path. Last week, the Grand Strand Area Transportation Advisory Committee approved nine hundred thousand dollars plus in federal funding for the installation of the Ocean Boulevard bike project. That'll coincide with the North Carolina DOT's Ocean Boulevard resurfacing contract that's scheduled to begin in September of twenty-two. If you hadn't, if you've seen all of the survey crews in the area here, it's, they're refining that, that locate, the exact location and the final configuration of the bike path. So they were here about the last two weeks and looking forward to that. Just totally changing the flavor of, of the island. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Hewitt? If not, mayor's comments? First thing on my mind tonight, the no-wake zone, which was made legal, I can't remember the number of years ago now, but I want to say it's about six years ago, six, eight years ago, which goes from the west end of Yacht Watch subdivision down to just beyond Lulu's Restaurant. It's not being enforced, it's not marked. And we've mentioned this before, but what I'm asking you Commissioners tonight, I hope that sometime in January, no later than February, that we can have an invitation sent to all of our enforcement departments. You know, the sheriff, the wildlife, the whole gamut of people that are in our boats that are supposed to be taking care of safety issues and environmental issues and so forth and so on through this strip of the intercoastal waterway. We need to get everybody on board. We need to find out all the legalities that the town has to satisfy and that they, the enforcement people, have to satisfy to see if we can get control of the safety problems that we're having in and around the bridge here. You know, we've all seen the jet skis go through the waterway, under the bridge, wide open boats, the whole gamut. So we've got, I think, I don't think we have anybody objecting to trying to curtail these problems. So I'm asking you Commissioners, is there anything that you feel like that hasn't been discussed or needs to be brought to our attention or whatever? Is the reason why we shouldn't go forth and try to bring the group together and get this thing underway before something really bad happens? I would ask that maybe, boils down to two questions for me. Do you want to address it in a regular meeting or do you want to have a special meeting?
Regular.
Regular meeting. And maybe put it at the first item on the attendance, so all those people can go.
Sure.
All right, so Madam Clerk, if you'll help work in getting that list together, maybe the chief can help us. And also, everyone connected in any way with that because, you know, people like the Lockwood, what's called the captains, people at Lockwood.
Association.
Association, people like that that need to be notified so everybody can have some input. Second thing on my mind is I was in a meeting last week and one of our county officials and I were talking about how growth is just unbelievable in this county. And I was taken back whenever I asked, how many people live in Brunswick County? And I was told right at a hundred and forty thousand. Hundred and forty thousand. And it's growing by the minute. The next thing, in talking about congestion around the unloading of the equipment and so forth, just everyone remember that you can go under the bridge on Brunswick Avenue and circumvent that congestion there where the work is taking place. And also, I hope everyone in the room and those that are listening are signed up for our email blast at Town Hall because one went out, I think, Madam Clerk, two days ago, about the good news about our flood insurance on this island. Fifteen percent, not everybody, but most people are going to be getting a fifteen percent discount over the next five years on your insurance. And I mean, my goodness, that's a lot of money for some people. For some of these people are paying, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars flood insurance. So that, you know, that's a pretty good chunk of money. So we're very satisfied and appreciative of that and for the staff and the Commissioners and all involved and working so hard to get that qualification met. And with that, Mr. Brown, you don't get to go next. Our mayor pro tem gets to go next. Mr. Smith, Rick Smith, Mayor Pro Tem, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But again, I want to, I want to start off by thanking Mike Sullivan. We can't say enough about the service that you gave to the Board of Commissioners. I just want to make sure you know it's, we really do appreciate what you've done for the town of Holden Beach and for the rest of the board. I'd like to thank the Parking Committee, which we finally got an agenda put together and we spent the better part of a day working on the proposals to get this paved parking done. GM was kind enough to sit right there with us and work through every page by page. And I think we've put together a reasonable starting plan and with, with the right information, we hopefully we can move forward. I'd like to thank the citizens that got out and voted and allowed me to, to remain as a Commissioner and be a Commissioner for the next four years. And especially that my board members were allowing me to opt, to take the position as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you. I want to thank Pat, Brian, and David for their putting together the Peer Property Use Plan. That was, that was very comprehensive. Again, that was, that was, took a lot of effort and a lot of time and I want to thank them as well as our Audit Committee for getting, doing the work that they need to do. The last two things involve the holidays and that's for the big turnout we had at Christmas Relighting. That was, number one, it was a lot of fun and there were a lot of people there. And I really, I really enjoyed that and it's, it just shows how this community all kind of seems to hang together. And the last thing is everybody have a safe, very Merry Christmas and, and we're looking forward to a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I don't know how many of y'all may have known out in Milliken. He passed away a few days ago. I think his, his, his son told me ninety-four years old. A lot of these homes over here on this island got his tubs, his showers, his plumbing pipes and all of that.
These are under a shallow lake.
That's it. And, and I'd just like to say we want to especially think of the family and his wife, you know, over the holiday season. This is, you know, it's got to be hard. And I wanted to ask our attorney, how's the hearing situation going over?
The hearing situation would not possibly be better.
We'd like to hear that. We love to hear that. Thank you. That's working out.
No, thank you.
Okay, okay. And, and we, I, I just want to wish everybody a really happy and merry new ye-, you know, Christmas and a happy new year. And just have a wonderful holiday. Spend all the time you can with your family because they're precious, okay? And, and just, just realize the season and just everybody stay safe in your travels and just everybody have a great time. Merry Christmas.
Dr. Dower?
I want to thank Mike Sullivan again for his service. I appreciate you doing all this work that you've done. And I have big shoes to fill, so hopefully I can do the community some good. I appreciate the community's support. I look forward to working with the staff, look forward to working with the board. I hope I can get some positive input. I want to thank Jim with the Otto for all the work he's done. I know you've got your hands full. I think we're smart in employing him and his services. I think they really know what they're doing and I look forward to working with you. And I want everybody to have a Merry Christmas and I hope it's all safe.
Mr. Murdock?
I'd also like to thank Mike for your service. You've done a great job and very, very privileged to serve with you up here. I'm just going to touch on the parking again. We, we look to Otto and Jim for guidance on this. This is his company's input, this is what he does. We're not reinventing the wheel. Other communities have done it and they've had to work through the same problems I'm sure we're going to have to work through. As I said before, I don't think it's going to be perfect and this is not set in stone. We can correct problems as they arise and we can make changes as needed. I do want everyone to really appreciate how precious this time of year is and not to get focused and let's all take a break from these issues we've had and go see your families and your friends and your loved ones and tell them you love them because that's, that's all this is about. And we are sitting up here to attempt every time we have a meeting and every time we take time out of our day for a special meeting or a committee meeting or a conversation on the phone with each other to do the right thing for this town. We're not going to please everybody, we understand that, but I promise you, we're not out to do the wrong thing. We will work it out. If we screw up something and it turns, it blows up in our face, we will work it out. But don't let the issues at hand. But don't let the issues at hand get bigger than life itself. So everybody, like I said, go to your families and your friends. Tell them you love them and have a good holiday season, and we'll pick this up again next year. Merry Christmas.
Ms. Pat?
Yeah, I want to just give a call out on something that one of our citizens did. You will have noticed, some of the commissioners, that Ward and Smith was in communication with the town on an advocacy issue that had to do with the sudden possible opportunity linked to the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act on stormwater. And that process got started because Vicky Myers sent me a message that she had gotten a heads up about Army Corps of Engineers having money, and stormwater was mentioned. And I didn't know anything about that, so I forwarded it to the town manager. And the town manager took a look into it and said, "I don't really have a lot of background, but I'll call Ward and Smith." So the town has actually gone forward and made an application for funding. We may not get it. It's an unknown. But it's a sign of how teamwork can really help move things forward. Sometimes a piece of information can result in something good. And again, I'd just like to say thank you to Vicky Myers for her heads up that did result in something that may bring us some money for much-needed stormwater work. I'm glad the pier is behind us. I feel like it's kind of behind me now, hopefully. We'll get parking resolved in the first couple of months of next year. And I certainly hope for a calm and smooth 2022. But if I have to, I can still fight back. Don't expect me to stop. I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and again, thanks, Mike. You'll be seeing me.
All right, Mr. Murdock, number twenty-seven. Second session. Yes, ma'am, we want to hear you first.
Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181185 instructs the staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the price in terms of contracts concerning the acquisition of real property.
You want to make a motion, Mr. Murdock?
Motion to adjourn the executive session.
Second.
Mr. Brown seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Unanimous? Those of you that are going to be going out in the cold and wet weather...
Take cookies.
Take a cookie and a drink. We're back in regular session. Is there a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned. I second.
All in favor say aye. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.